I'd like to call this meeting the Shoal City Council order. Show, road call that all council members are present. Tonight I've asked Councilman Judd to leave it as a note invocation followed by the pledge by Councilman Whipple. If you'd all like to join us, you may do so at this time.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together this evening. We're grateful for this beautiful city that we live in, for the amazing people that live here in the city of Shoal. And we're grateful for the kindness and the neighbors that we all have and appreciate. We're grateful for our city staff and all that they do to keep our city beautiful and the hard work that they put in. We're grateful for our first responders, for our police officers and our firefighters, our military personnel. We ask that thou look after them and watch over them and bless them. And we're grateful for this country we live in, the freedoms that we have. And we ask that thou will help us to preserve those. And we ask for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, in the name of the Lord.
Please join me in the pledge.
Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It's all been written on there and I don't even have it. Thank you, Councilman Judd, Councilman Whipple. Next item on the agenda is called the public. Any citizen desired to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdictions of the city council may do so at this time. Mr. Roberts, see, we already had you up here.
A huge thank you to the community, to the city, to everybody who supported us. We had our car show this last weekend. We had the cruise down the deuce on Friday and we had the car show on Saturday. By all of the reports that we've seen and from our viewpoint, it was a very successful show. We had more cars than the cruise than we've had before. We had more people at the Burger Burn than we've had before. We had more people actually in the car show than we've had before. And we had more spectators than we've had before. We didn't have any negative incidents at all. Everything went really, really well. We, everybody, the feedback that we got from everybody was very positive. That's largely due to the support that we've received from everybody. The community in general supports us. We have major sponsors and we have people that donated a lot of door prizes and silent auction items. I could mention them, but I would go over my three-minute limit. So it was great. I love the car that the mayor picked out as his favorite, a Graham, which most people have never seen or heard of. It looks like an El Camino made back in 1938. So it's a really, really nice car.
Well, and actually, that one was a four-door and it's been converted over to a two-door.
Customized.
Yes.
And the guy did an awesome job on it. You know, it was quite a testament to somebody's ingenuity and craftsmanship. We can't thank enough. Public Works and the city and allowing us to use the field. We compare our situation with other car shows around and we feel blessed because we have so much support. You know, being able to use the field, having Public Works help us with getting cars out of the parking lot. We want to thank the church for giving us the staging area. Just the police department helped, you know. We had support from Parks and Rec, from Jay and his group and the city as a whole, you know. All the special event meeting group, all we can do is say thank you. It was wonderful and we hope that we can continue to receive that kind of support next year at this time when we do that show again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and thank you guys too. I mean, you guys put that on every year. You take care of the fields. You guys do a great job, very well organized. I got to sneak in there and sneak out. I was had a busy day Saturday, but I appreciate all the work you guys do too as well.
We have an excellent volunteer crew. We have our core group that plans all of this. We meet every week for the months prior and we try to make sure that we are prepared for any possibility. We had the Arizona Rangers there. They helped us keep the dogs off the field, which has always been a problem in the past. And this year it was not a problem. And, you know, we've, but mostly our core group worked very hard to make everything happen. But we also had a lot of external volunteers, parking volunteers. We just have a great, great support group, both in the community and within our group. So we're appreciative to everybody. We had a whole car club come up from the valley, brand new Corvettes, you know, New York Corvettes. Corvette Car Club came up. Some people were like, ah, they got many cars and a car show that should be for classic cars. Hey, someday they're going to be classic cars and we don't have an age limitation. We're also trying to encourage younger people to be involved in this. So we want to reach out as much as we can to the decade between, you know, 18 and 30, you know. We really want to reach out because we need that new energy and the new enthusiasm that comes with that. So anyway, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is recognition of the winners of the Kid Rock poster contest. And we have a few prizes up here. Ms. Hall, I'm not sure how many we judged this year. I know there's Mr. Hatch and myself judged a table full of posters. And how we could pick four out of that is pretty tough. So thank you, Mr. Hatch, for doing that. It's amazing, some of this artwork, but first of all, we'll start with.
Mayor, if I can, just talk a little bit about the program.
Oh, sure.
Just a little bit of information regarding the Kids Rock program, which stands for Kids Reach Out for Community Knowledge. The Kids Rock is an educational program for third grade students at Nicholas Homestead Elementary. The program was designed to teach students about their city government and how they can become good citizens. The city clerk's office actually launched the program in the spring of 2001. So it's been going on for quite a while, after meeting with the third grade teachers who were enthusiastic about their students learning more about citizenship. Since then, we provide students with bus tour of different facility, city facilities, which include the wetlands, the airport, Public Works yard. Staff members from each of the facilities provide tours and explain to the students how each facility operates. We also added a walking tour for students and they walk, sorry, to the library over here to Shoal TV. They go to the police department and the fire district as well. And then there's a couple of classroom presentations that some of our departments go into their classrooms to talk about some of our departments. We also created a poster contest to allow the students to draw their ideas of community pride. And so that's what we have tonight. Like you said, you guys judged a lot of posters. We probably had, I want to say between 50 and 60 posters that were completed by the students. And I just want to take a minute to thank the city council, thank our staff, our teachers and the kids for keeping this program great. It's been, it's been an honor to be part of this program and hope the kids enjoy it as much as we all enjoy it.
Especially third graders, that's amazing. So first, we'll call up the fourth place winner.
So the fourth place winner is Rosalie Schultz. If you'll come up, please.
Pretty awesome what she wrote. It's Shoal City Park, but memories can be made. That's really cool. Congratulations.
Stay up here, okay?
Thank you.
Stay right here, okay?
And our third place can't be here tonight, but she, this one was pretty amazing too. The artwork for the trusses of the Shoal Library. I mean, the detail is just amazing.
And her name is Claire Sellers.
And second place, and now I know why they're here. I didn't know that when we were judging these, but second place is.
Evelyn Adams.
Adams Cabin. She drew the wagon that's out there. I mean, just amazing.
Stay right here.
Congratulations. And our first place.
Yes, Isabella Babel.
She kind of drew in one piece of paper kind of all of Shoal, the trees, the tractors and everything, the snowflakes. So great job by these kids and it's absolutely amazes me, the art, the artists we have in our community. But if you guys want to take, anybody want to take some pictures, you can come up closer. Us too? What's so funny?
It's so big, everybody.
Nothing worse than inside joke and we don't know about. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you. You can sit back. Next item on the agenda is presentation by the, by City of Shoal's American Disabilities Act Committee, Mr. Brimhall. And I believe we have a little video that we're going to show out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's time, it's that time of year again to report on the ADA committee that I chair. And it's my turn to present this year. And we've had some amazing things that the city has done with respect to being able to better cater to our ADA population. And there's a large ADA population in the White Mountains and Shoal being the hub. I think we're the leaders in the White Mountains in providing accessible amenities to our citizens and the people who visit Shoal. So I wanted to go ahead and put on the screen, I chose four things with Justin Trigaskis' help at the talk a little bit about this evening. And I was very excited by hearing about the pictures that the kids drew. A lot of them drew parks. That's awesome. We're going to have a new park and that park is Tim McKay Park and that is going to be done very, very soon. And if, everybody knows where that's going to be, that's from central to Old Linden. And the south boundary is the 260, that parcel of land behind there that you see the horses on often. You've seen that really nice fence go up. But all of the amenities that are going to be inside of that park are going to be ADA friendly. And that's kind of the theme that we as a city have adopted is that all of our parks from here on out, they're going to have ADA features and not just meet ADA, but exceed. We got a really good compliment from a gentleman who's on the committee, Trampus Johnson. You'll see a little bit later, Trampus has a child with some severe physical needs. And he said that in his travels, that the city of Shoal, that Shoal in general does more to cater to the ADA population than most larger municipalities. Which is anecdotal, but coming from someone who knows and travels quite a bit and has a lot of experience in having to manage an ADA person's life. He says we're doing a great job. And so I took that to heart. I thought that was a wonderful commentary. So this new park will have all, and Trampus has really worked hard on it, as all Bill's crew has. The engineering group has worked very hard on this parcel to make sure all of the features are ADA compliant and exceed the ADA statutes. I'm going to go ahead, Grace and Miles and his crew have recently put together with Trampus' help, a handicap parking PSA. And we'd like to go ahead and play that now.
We ask you as members of the community to use these spaces as you need them, but also be on the lookout for people who might be abusing these accessible parking spaces. I'm standing here today in a disabled parking spot to talk to you about ways that you as members of the community can also help make our community more accessible. And that is through proper use of these disabled parking spots. These spaces are designated for people with disability. It allows them a safe and inclusive access to the many facilities we have here at the city. In addition to the parking spot, it's always accompanied with a striped area. The striped area is an access aisle. This serves as an unloading zone for people with disabilities in and out of their vehicles, as well as inclusive access to the many facilities we have here at the city. It's important to remember that these are not parking spaces. This is an important loading zone for people who have a disability. We don't want to block that with your vehicle. We don't want to park over those lines. We don't want to leave shopping carts in that area as well. So we want to keep that in mind. If you see someone who is abusing one of these disabled parking spaces, you can report that abuse using the Parking Mobility app. That's available in the major app stores to download. The app will walk you through taking pictures of the violation, whether it be someone parking here without a placard or they are parking over a line or even they are blocking an access aisle. You'll take pictures of that, do a quick write-up of what the violation is. And that will then get reported on to PD and they will take care of it from there. Thank you for your time today.
Shall we, we thought we'd go ahead and show that in its entirety because it's a pretty good piece. There's a longer one too. We did the short one for you tonight. But again, to the younger drivers maybe in the room and a good reminder for all of us that there are people who utilize those spaces to get around and live their lives. That's who it's for. So just be aware of that. This is a good reminder that we're going to post every so often as we see the need arise and just it's a good reminder. And I think Grace and Miles did a great job doing that.
You know, some of the compliments I hear a lot of are the trail in the meadow for the fishing and the access to the water on wheelchairs. Or I think that's pretty awesome. And glad to hear that, that we're doing that to this park. And I know we've talked in the past about doing it to all future parks, so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. So if somebody has an area, say around their home or not home, but around a business somewhere where we don't have enough, can they contact the city and see if maybe we need to add one or take, you know, I don't know how the ADA compliance works. I'm not sure, like a parking lot, if there's a huge parking lot, there's only two, but the size of that parking lot needs to be 10. How do they go about doing that?
So this is essentially, this committee is just for our efforts, the city's efforts, the public efforts. Justin Trigaskis and his group, in every new build or every remodel, they're always checking for ADA compliance. And so recently, there's been a lot of those. And Justin can probably talk a little bit more specifically, but just by and large, anything that comes through, the plans that come through Justin and Bill's office, they're reviewing those things for ADA compliance. But when it comes to public stuff, that's what we're concerned with, with this committee. The private stuff, Justin's group kind of takes care of that. But if a business isn't complying, that's not our jurisdiction. That would be a state thing. So you'd want to call the attorney general or you'd want to give, honestly, you want to give that business the opportunity to comply first and then, you know, do what you need to do. Most of our businesses up here are very aware of our efforts and the city's efforts to comply. And they're also wanting to comply. Sometimes people complain and we come into this too. Sometimes people complain to those businesses or they don't actually complain, they'll come complain to us and we'll tell them to go talk to the business and they'll go talk to the business and it'll be taken care of. People want to comply with this generally.
Questions or comments?
Couple more things. I'm taking a lot more time than I planned on. We recently did a switch over, I think everybody's aware of this, a switch over from our old website to a new website. And with that, baked into the cake of the new website is one of the cool features of it that we don't even have to worry about because it won't let you enter a picture or anything into the website unless it complies with visually and auditory impaired folks. So it can read it to them, it can give them a little bit of context on what they're seeing if it's blurry, right? So that's baked into the cake. Anything that our staff puts into the website has to go through those parameters. So compliance with those things is done, which was a really cool feature that we wanted to highlight in this presentation. And then finally, in the last year, this was highlighted in the state of the city, but we wanted to highlight it again because it's a pretty neat feature, was the project that allowed ADA access to Shoal Lake. And here it is pictured, Miles and his group went out and took some awesome pictures last week with everything really green. So pretty neat picture and we're excited to have that recreational amenity available to folks with ADA concerns. So there's a lot going on. That's, I mean, that was just kind of the top four. I wanted to give you kind of a big overview of what we're doing, but we have ADA compliance in mind. We've got Trampus, who again is a parent of an ADA child on that committee. And also we have Deanne Moya, who also has an ADA child. Zach is just a dynamo. And so her input and Trampus' input has been vital to us understanding what the needs are for our community up here who have those needs. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Brimhall. You guys are doing an amazing job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay.
Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Well, I proclaim, Mayor by proclaiming June 2024, a Shoal High School Cougar Cheerleading State Championship Month. Consideration of acceptance of LDA runway lights. Consideration of acceptance of airport hangar infrastructure improvements. Consideration of acceptance of well eight repairs. Consideration of acceptance of well nine repairs. Consideration of the minutes of the Shoal City Council meeting on May 21st, 2024. Anybody wants to pull one or entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
We got a motion by the vice mayor, second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Let's go back over here. Go back to A and proclamation by the mayor proclaiming June 2024, a Shoal Cougar High School show, I forgot that part earlier, cheerleading state championship month again in the city of Shoal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Whereas on Saturday, February 24th, 2024, the Shoal High School Varsity Show Cheerleading Team won the Division III Varsity Show Chair at the Arizona State Cheerleading Tournament. And whereas the city of Shoal recognizes excellence and dedication by the cheerleaders, their parents, the coaching staff, the administration, the student body and the community. And whereas the city of Shoal recognizes outstanding sportsmanship by the cheerleaders, their fans and their coaches. And whereas the city of Shoal recognizes the desire, determination and discipline of each cheerleader and the team's collective determination. Now therefore, John Leach Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the Shoal City Council, does hereby proclaim June 2024 as Shoal High, Shoal High School Cougar Cheerleading State Championship Month in the city of Shoal and urges all citizens in the community to acknowledge this tremendous achievement.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Congratulations again. How many of you are seniors? Just curious. All by yourself?
No, there's other ones.
Okay, not here. Once again, congratulations. You guys are absolutely amazing. Obviously you have some amazing coaches. Are they here? Come on up, coaches. You can bring the baby. Honey said Shoal. Congratulations again and we have a proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Great job. Very nice.
So fancy, thank you.
Sophia, just stay up here because we have a number of presentations. Our coaches are Anna Khan, that's you, and Becca Skinner, that's you, and Shanley Finch and Samantha Ashley. So we have for each of you a nice little.
Thank you.
Something a little different than shirts.
Yes, thank you.
And then our athletes, we have Jesse Chevalier. Dawson Blair.
Is Dawson here?
No, we're missing like a handful of girls.
We'll just keep, we'll put them back in the box after we do that.
Okay. Leah Howe.
Yeah, stay up here.
Where's Jesse?
Stand up, Jesse.
We didn't want you to get away. Bailey Brower. Travanny Wodenberg.
They all get jobs in the summer.
Sammy Server.
Yes, yeah, well, we don't let them out here very much.
Brently Finch. Miley Darden. Brooklyn Rosenhoff. Lottie Ingle.
Congratulations.
Kate Larson. Ellie McGregor. Julia Middleton. Hastings Reedhead. Regina Cantor. Haley Robinson. Shelby Cuneo. Adria Ellerbe. And we've already named the coaches, so. If you guys want to scooch in, allow your parents to take some pictures.
Everybody wants to take pictures? Come on up. Somebody take a picture.
Yeah, Clint, you better get up here, buddy. Your wife's gonna be mad if you didn't take a picture. It's your job when Shanley's not here.
Great, Shavvy.
Wait, wait, one more. Wait, wait, wait.
One more, one more.
And somebody's got to turn around and take this box we got for the other girl.
Actually, yeah.
I have one, too.
This one as well?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Here's some more.
Keep up the good work.
Set it on top there? You think you got it?
I'll give this one to Jesse.
Oh, Jesse got it?
Thanks, Jesse.
She has another one. Good twin.
Congratulations.
This is weed. I'm sorry. Weed? I heard weed. I'm sorry.
I used to think that. No, it is good. It is, it is.
Alrighty. Next item on the agenda is, in our new business, consideration appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission Member.
May I need to declare conflict? Can I step out for a minute?
Mrs. Whipple. Or Mrs. Whipple. Mrs. Hall, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner, now Councilmember Derek Whipple, the commission has a vacancy with the term expiring March 2027. Staff advertised the vacancy and received four applications. The council interviewed three applicants at a special meeting on June 4th prior to the regular meeting tonight. Attached is a ballot showing the names of the four applicants. Councilmembers should mark one choice on the ballot for the individual they wish to appoint. After I tally the results and indicate the individual with the most votes, a formal motion may be made based on the results, and then councilmembers' votes will be reflected in the minutes. Mayor with the most votes is Gary Whipple.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to accept the ballots as read, as camp.
Making motion to accept the ballots.
Got a motion, I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate, we had, we had four people throw their name in the hat, and we had to pick one, so we appreciate that for sure. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of adoption of ordinance number 202405, extending and increasing the corporate city limits of the city of Cholo, Navajo County, State of Arizona, by annexing certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Cholo AP, or number P 1624. Mr. Dragaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On January 16th, 2024, the city council was presented with a request submitted by Joseph Holland to annex a portion of land located in an existing county island into the city of Cholo. The area proposed to be annexed is described as AP number 21033040C. The proposed annexation consists of approximately .51 acres. The proposed property meets the statutory criteria for annexation. At the meeting, staff was directed to file the blank annexation petition with the county recorder for the proposed annexation property. After receiving information from the Navajo County Assessors Department and the Arizona Department of Revenue, staff filed the petition on April 5th, 2024. The property is owned by one property owner, and staff obtained the signature from the property owner representing the majority of the assessed valuation. State statute requires the signatures from a minimum of 50% of the property owners and 50% of the assessed valuation of the annexation area. As required by state statute, a public hearing was held on April 23rd, 2024. After the public hearing, once the 30-day waiting period has expired, the signature was obtained, and the signed annexation petition was recorded with Navajo County. The next step is for the city council to adopt an ordinance approving the annexation. The existing zoning within the county is a general comparable to the city's AR-43 zoning. Once this parcel is annexed, it will be zoned AR-43. Any requested changes would then proceed through the normal zone change procedures. Reading and adoption of ordinance number 2020-05, sorry, 2024-05 is scheduled for tonight's meeting, and the ordinance would be effective in 30 days. Staff is available for questions at this point.
There's an ordinance you're going to read? Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion if you.
Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Cholo, Navajo County, State of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 7, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto, by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Cholo, Arizona.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if we, when you're ready.
Go ahead. Any questions or comments down? Mr. Adams.
Adopt ordinance number 2024-05.
Got a motion, I need a second. Councilman, you got all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration, consideration award of construct, or contract for airport hangar roof overlay, city of Cholo Project Number FM 7524. Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city-owned airport hangar roof for guardian air has fallen into disrepair and developed many leaks due to the age and wind damage. Staff investigated two options for the repairs. Option one is to complete roof replacement, which involves pulling all the damaged sheet metal from the building, likely causing guardian air to be displaced until the roof can be replaced. Or option two is an overlay of the entire roof. Option two will allow guardian air to continue business as usual with little inconvenience. Staff is proposing to cover the entire hangar roof by installing one-inch orientated strand board in between the ridges of the metal roof to make a flat surface, and attaching a 60-millimeter mulehide grand thermoplastic polyelaphine rubber membrane, which is a heavy-duty drip-edge mechanically fastened to cover the entire roof. The invitation to bid was published as required, and only one company, TNT Exteriors LLC, attended the mandatory pre-bid conference on May 16th, 2024. TNT Exteriors LLC put in a bid of $85,357. Staff recommends awarding the contract for repairing the airport hangar roof, city of Cholo Project Number FM 7524, to TNT Exteriors LLC in the amount not to exceed $85,375, which is $14,625 under budget. Any questions?
Questions or comments? I have one. When I first read that, I was thinking that it's kind of a Band-Aid, not a repair because of the business. What's the warranty on that?
20 years.
It's 20 years, okay.
Yeah, and we've used this system on other roofs in the city. The pool's the first one, and that was like seven years ago, and it's been fantastic.
Is that like the rubber?
Yes. PVC.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Or motions?
Okay, I move to award the contract for the airport hangar roof overlay, city of Cholo Project Number FM 7524, to TNT Exteriors LLC in an amount not to exceed $85,357.
Got a motion, I need a second. Got a second by Councilman Whipple. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. I would look that way that time. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 202406, amending Title 19 of the Cholo City Code and adopting resolution number R 2024-18, declaring as public record that document titled Title 19 Zoning. Mr. Dragaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is probably one of the thickest packets you guys have had in a while. Approximately 290 pages of that consists of proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance.
And you're going to read them all, right?
I'm going to start at page one.
Start at page one.
Yes. No, I will summarize some of the major changes. Understanding that this is just a brief summary, there are quite a few other things that are not specifically listed. This has been scheduled for a public hearing, and certainly staff will entertain any questions that the council may have. You may also recognize some of these as items that have been discussed at previous retreats and previously with the council, and now are being addressed with the zoning ordinance. So on April 23rd of 24, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a study session to discuss proposed revisions to Title 19 zoning of the city code. At their regular meeting on May 28th of 24, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to discuss these proposed revisions. Following the public hearing, the commission voted four to zero. We had two commissioners absent with vacant seat to approve the revisions and forward this recommendation to the city council. Proposed revisions include, but are not limited to, the following. The addition of a definition of an aggrieved person. Clarification of timeline calculations for scheduling of meetings. Clarification of requirements for the placement of C or shipping containers. Clarification of fence height calculation requirements along streets. Removal of provision which allows for clearing and grading of property without a valid building permit. Moving group homes for the handicapped to permitted uses in all residential zones. Restaurants serving beer and wine would be considered a permitted use in commercial zones. Restaurants serving alcohol other than beer and wine would remain as a conditional use. Drive-through restaurants not adjacent to residentially-zoned property would become a permitted use in the C2 or general commercial zoning district. Mini storage facilities would no longer be considered a conditional use in the C2 zoning district and would only be allowed in the industrial zones. Temporary business signs would be permitted for a period of 60 days. A reduction in time limits for the display of electronic message board signs. Clarification of allowances for small wireless facilities. Changes to fall zone requirements for setback calculations related to cell towers. Changes to allowed hours of operation for marijuana-related facilities consistent with recent council action. We did add one item following the commission review. This item would allow for temporary cell towers as an administratively-approved use provided a valid building permit for a permanent cell tower is in place. Essentially, the thought is if there's a location that requires a cell tower, and we've heard quite a few comments from people regarding cell service, that once you have a building permit, you could put in a temporary cell tower while you're constructing the permanent cell tower. Hopefully trying to avoid gaps in coverage during the length of time that that tower is under construction. Also, in response to concerns related to workforce housing, provisions are being made for allowance for a caretaker's residence in conjunction with a business in commercial zones. Reduction in lot size requirements for detached guest houses. Allowance for attached guest units to be rented in all residential zones. Allowing multifamily dwellings by conditional use permit in the MH or manufactured home zoning district. And that pretty much sums it up. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff is available. Again, this has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Thank you. I'll right, turn, or open it up to a public hearing, then we'll bring it back to the council. At this time, I'll open it up to a public hearing. See, nobody run. I'll turn it back to the council for any comments or questions. I know when I was reading through that, I, I kind of lost interest because it, I'm sorry, but there was so much. So I'm, thank you for not reading all 200 pages. I tried. I did go to the highlighted things, so if anybody has any questions or comments, I know this has been a few years in the making. This just didn't happen last week. I do understand. I think some of those might have even been when I was on TMZ, it seems like, that we're still talking about it. Heard light signs again, and I'm like, oh, no, not again. So appreciate that. Is there any questions or comments or motions?
If I may.
Yes.
Justin, can you go back to the workforce housing area and repeat that?
Yes. So we understand that workforce housing is a critical need in the community. The council recently passed a resolution related to workforce housing and some incentives that the city can offer for that. Additionally, we looked, as we were going through the zoning ordinance, to find ways that we could perhaps help encourage workforce housing. So as a result, there are several items that were specifically included in the revisions before you this evening that we believe will help at least encourage, maybe remove some barriers for that. The first would be allowance for a caretaker's residence in conjunction with a business in commercial zones. So right now, if you're in the industrial zone, you can have a caretaker's residence. We do not have that provision in a commercial zone where somebody could have a little business, a shop, whatever, office with an apartment in the back. We don't really have that in our code right now, so we're recommending that that be included as an option for people. We also are recommending, so we do have in our code currently provisions for a detached guest house. This would be like a casita in somebody's backyard. Admittedly, the current requirements are a little bit onerous as to what size lot you would need to have, and that varies depending on the zoning district. So it's not a uniform number throughout the different zoning districts in the city. It's recommended that those numbers be reduced, again, kind of to widen the door a little bit as to opportunities for that detached guest house. They do require a conditional use permit, so there is still a little bit of neighbor notification and input available for that.
What are the parking requirements?
So you're required to have two. So you're required to have two parking spaces per unit. That's onsite parking. So as part of the permit application, they would need to show us that their driveway is wide enough or that they have a garage or other type parking facilities to fit at least four vehicles, two for the primary residence and two for the detached guest house.
And is there a delineation between a VRBO versus a guest house?
There's not. Currently, with state law, we're really not allowed to prohibit VRBOs, understanding that that may be an option that people might pursue. The discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission was, well, if they're applying for a conditional use permit, then we can discuss the VRBO, whether it's going to be a short term or a long term rental at that point. There could be some additional conditions of approval depending on whether it's a short term or a long term rental.
Thank you.
You mentioned the MH, the mobile home. That was changed to, was it multifamily? What was that one?
So currently in our MH zone, which is the manufactured home zoning district, we allow for like RV parks, manufactured home parks. We do not allow for apartments in the MH zone. The thinking was, you know, are apartments really any more of an impact on the adjacent area than maybe a manufactured home park? And the feeling was, no, they're probably pretty similar. And so again, trying to open that door a little bit. It would require a conditional use permit, but they, and they would still be required to meet the R two seven zoning district standards for density and open space and setbacks and those types of things. But this would give another option for people who are interested in doing apartments or multifamily. Our R two seven zoning district, which is the standard zoning district for multifamily, R stands for residential, the two stands for multi. So we have R one zoning districts, and then we have a single R two zoning district. Those are pretty limited. So this again would kind of give some more options for people interested in doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank Justin and your team for doing this on a stand. We talked about workforce housing at our retreat back in October. And so I know that this has been on the discussion of this council wanting to bring forth workforce housing and trying to figure out. I think that if you have workforce housing and you're trying to deal with it, it's not a one size fits all. You have to do it from a multifaceted approach. And so, you know, the council already passed ordinance that allows a large developers to come in here. And now I think that this opens it up in a very, in a less impactful way. It's a very smart planning to be able to figure out how other ways in which we can bring about workforce housing for, not only for the citizens, but for the city of Sholo, for our employees, and also for the employees of the school district, the Summit Healthcare, some of the other larger employers are having a hard time attracting and retaining individuals who can live here within the city limits. And so I think that I want to thank you and your team and also the members of this council for taking a really proactive approach to workforce housing and looking at it from kind of the whole spectrum, because I think that it would be a little naive to think that we could just handle workforce housing. I think throughout the state, this is an issue. And so being able to look at it from, for multiple areas and multiple individuals who might be able to contribute with to the workforce housing is a smart approach. So thank you for doing that. And I appreciate that, you know, the discussion happened in October and that, you know, now we're seeing this come to fruition. So I know sometimes things don't move as quickly as we would always like them to, but I think that, you know, this is something that I appreciate, that it has moved as quickly as it has. So thank you, Justin, and your leadership.
Thank you. All right, sign a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll still have to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Absolutely. I'd like to skip this part because this one's a long one. City of Sholo Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero six, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, amending the code of the city of Sholo, Arizona by amending Title Nineteen of the zoning ordinance by amending Title nineteen point oh five pertaining to definitions, amending Title nineteen point ten pertaining to administration, amending Title nineteen point fifteen pertaining to zoning amendments plan review, amending Title nineteen point twenty pertaining to conditional use permits, amending Title nineteen point twenty-five pertaining to general provisions, amending Title nineteen point thirty pertaining to zoning districts established, amending Title nineteen point forty pertaining to GA dash five zone, general agricultural, five acres, amending Title nineteen point four five pertaining to AR zones, amending Title nineteen point fifty pertaining to R one zones, amending Title nineteen point fifty-five pertaining to R two dash seven, single family and multifamily residential, seven thousand square feet, amending Title nineteen point sixty pertaining to MH zone, amending Title nineteen point sixty-five pertaining to DC zone, amending Title nineteen seventy pertaining to C zones, amending Title nineteen point seven five pertaining to I zones, amending Title nineteen point eighty pertaining to PUD zone, planned unit development zoning, amending Title nineteen point one hundred pertaining to signs, amending Title nineteen point one oh five pertaining to parking, amending Title nineteen point one ten pertaining to outdoor light control, amending Title nineteen point one one five pertaining to wireless telecommunications towers and antennas, amending Title nineteen point one two zero pertaining to medical marijuana-related facilities, amending Title nineteen point one two five pertaining to sexually oriented businesses, amending Title nineteen point one three zero pertaining to appeals and variances. Thank you.
I see why you wished that we would have skipped that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, now entertain a motion. Councilman Park.
I move to adopt ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero six, amending Title Nineteen of the Sholo City Code and resolution R two thousand and twenty-four dash eighteen, declaring as a public record the document titled Title Nineteen zoning.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Justin, for all your hard work on that, for sure. You guys have been busy. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number R two thousand and twenty-four seventeen, adopting tentative budget establishing the expenditure limit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have the next step of our budget process. We're gonna present to the council the tentative budget and adopt the resolution and establish the expenditure limitation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Some of the slides will be familiar as we've looked at them a few times, so I won't spend a lot of time on them. But tonight, we're here with the tentative budget adoption. At our next council meeting, we'll have a public hearing and the final budget adoption. And then in July, July sixteenth, the secondary tax rate adoption. Just a reminder for the community and for the council, the goals and priorities that were established to help us guide through the budget process. Our adopted budget versus our actual expenditures, historically going back to two thousand and twenty, as a reminder that we always underspend our budget, and some of that's project carryover, some of it's the conservative budgeting on the revenue side, which allows us to handle all the projects that we put in the budget. This slide is a breakdown of the revenues for all funds for the budget. A hundred and forty-six million. About fifty-four percent of that's operating revenues, and then we have thirty-five percent as a beginning fund balance across all funds. Further breakdown on the revenues, the beginning balance is about fifty-one million, savings and reserves from prior years. Other financing sources, we have unanticipated that we can use for accepting grants, so awards of funds that are not in the budget, and then some inter-fund transfers. And then lastly, the operating revenues at seventy-nine million, revenue that will be collected during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Breakdown of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget of how these revenues will break out for the intergovernmental, thirty-nine percent, local taxes, twenty percent, state shared revenues at nine point two percent, charges for service, seven point five percent, and then utility fees, seventeen percent. Our utility fees, the total is about ten point four million. This is five point one million for water, three point five million for wastewater, and then sanitation, one point eight million. And then we did include the rates, and just as a reminder to those who are watching, that with the new contract with Waste Management, the rate's gonna go up from nineteen twenty-five for one cart, regular cart and one recycled cart, to twenty-one eighty-five. And then the additional carts will go from eight dollars and two cents to thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. As far as our local sales tax goes, we have in this year, the upcoming year's budget, fifteen point two million. It's a very conservative number. We are estimating that we'll be at eighteen point three million for two thousand and twenty-four. When this slide was put together, the actual numbers is tracking actually better than what we did in two thousand and twenty-three, so we expect to exceed twenty million in the sales tax estimate for two thousand and twenty-four. On the state shared revenues, you've probably heard some talk about the state budget. The legislature still has not made any decisions on the budget. We're not getting a lot of information. We did get their estimates for the state shared revenues, and we did see that the estimates have decreased when compared to two thousand and twenty-four by about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. With our conservative budgeting, it's gonna be closer to three hundred and eighty-four thousand. That will be short compared to last year. But the way we budget our local sales tax, I really don't have any concerns about us being able to cover that amount because we're usually a couple million low on our revenue estimates with our local sales tax. So I really don't have any concerns with that. The intergovernmental grant revenues, we've applied for federal money for the Scott Ranch Road for many years in a row now, I think eleven or twelve. That's a twenty-seven million dollar project. We should find out within the next couple of weeks if we've got that award or not. And then we also receive other grant funding for, from FEMA, EMA, the two point two million, and congressional funding there. Airport grants, SRO grants for the officers at the schools, and parks grants and other grants that are listed. And if we do get any new grants that are not budgeted, we'll bring those to the council for approval, and we can use our unanticipated to accept those revenues and move ahead with projects if the council approves. This is our expenditures by type. I always like to see a large percentage of this as capital. It shows that we're investing in the community, putting, repairing, maintaining, in some cases, but mostly for capital. It's new. That helps us to serve our citizens better. And then personnel is also at fifteen percent, which is a good portion of the budget, and then operations at sixteen point seven percent. For personnel, with fiscal year twenty-five, the number, I think this number's a hundred and eighty-one point seven. Actually, this number looks a little bit low. So it's actually, do you remember the number? It's one. Do we not?
Let's never make mistakes. What are you doing?
Well, I can, I can proceed, I have the printouts. You just won't be able to see it on your slides, but I can, while they're looking, to see if they can get access to it. On the personnel, we have a hundred and eighty-eight point six full-time equivalents, and the budget number is twenty point two million. We did add, at the, at the library, two part-time pages. They'll be about ten hours a week. And actually, we reduced the pages. We're gonna increase by one part-time page year round instead of the two part-time pages for the three months, which we'd had in the current year's budget. And then we're adding two full-time equivalents to the parks and facilities maintenance. We're adding a maintenance technician to help with the addition of the parks and splash pad, things of that nature. And we're also adding a custodian with the addition of a couple of buildings over the last couple of years. We have an addition of two full-time equivalent positions in police. One of those is a community action officer, and one is for a police officer. And so the council is aware, we have applied for a cops grant for the new police officer position. So if we do get awarded that cops grant, we'll have two years of salary paid for on the approved position. And then after that, I think we have to keep them on for an additional two years. So that'll take our sworn number to thirty-seven. We also have an increase of two full-time equivalents in parks and recreation, an assistant aquatic center manager to help out with running the aquatic center. And then we do have the recreation coordinator, which was brought to the council, I believe, at the first of May. And then reduction of point three full-time equivalent in public information, reduce part-time staff, but increase the hours for existing staff. So we have two part-time, one's currently at twenty-eight hours with state retirement benefits. We'll bring up, we'll move the second person from twenty to twenty-eight hours, and they'll also be eligible for the retirement benefits. It won't be insurance, but it'll be the retirement. Well, that was a mouthful on the personnel. Any questions on what we've done there? Yes?
The other part-time personnel that you talked about, did you mention the ASRS?
Right. Yes.
And will we be covering what?
None. Just the, just the two at the public information. Any other questions on the personnel? Okay. So with the authorization of the changes, that'll take us from a hundred and eighty-one point seven to a hundred and eighty-eight point six for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. And then personnel by service area. Now, sorry for the mix-up there, but it's like we're back on track. This is the historical chart for the full-time equivalents. Back in two thousand and sixteen, we're at a hundred and fifty-three point nine, which brings us to fiscal year twenty-five. We got a hundred and eighty-eight point six. This is a breakdown of personnel by service area. Public safety, thirty-five percent. Utilities, fourteen. Public works, eighteen. General government, twenty-two point five, and then community services, twenty-nine point three. In the capital and contingencies for general operations, capital, fifteen point four million. Streets and engineering, thirty-five million. A large chunk of that's the Scott Ranch Road. And then parks and facilities maintenance, six point five million. And then airport, one point three. Wastewater, three point seven, and water, three point eight. We did move the council contingency from three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty for fiscal year twenty-five. For our reserves, we have a goal of three months in operating, and we're able to achieve that with this year's budget. Our total reserves is five point two million. In the general fund, we are required to have a million dollars. That was voter required when we did permanent base in two thousand and sixteen. And then we also have increased our water treatment plant reserve to two point five million. This is a breakdown of expenditures by service area. Public works is forty-six point two percent. Community services, three point nine. Public safety, ten point two two. General government, twenty-three point three three. And utilities, fifteen point three. And this is a breakdown, further breakdown of general fund and how all the expenditures are set by department. So what's next? We do have the tentative budget adoption tonight, which will adopt resolution R two thousand and twenty-four dash seventeen and set the expenditure limitation. Then the budget will be advertised in the paper for two weeks in preparation for the final budget adoption on June eighteenth. the final budget adoption on June eighteenth. And we'll have a public hearing on the budget and the tax levy at that meeting, which will be our next meeting in two weeks, and then our secondary property tax levy, July sixteenth. And I'm available for any questions. And after that, we'll just need a motion from the council to adopt the resolution.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, um, Justin, on the public information, did we add personnel there, did you say?
No, we didn't add anybody. We had someone there that's at twenty hours. We moved them from twenty to twenty-eight. At one point, we had three part-timers, and then we were unable to keep them all filled, so we had two that ended up staying longer, and, um, so we increased their hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Park?
I should make a motion.
Sure.
Uh, I'll move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five at one hundred and twenty-six million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand and five hundred and twenty-six dollars and zero cents.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Adams? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Justin.
And I looked at him first and called. Okay, next item on the agenda, um, at this time, the city council will recess into a special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for the district. Yeah, I will call this special meeting to order so that all board members are present. Uh, first item on the agenda is adoption of the tentative budget, consideration of resolution number R twenty-four oh one, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitations for fiscal year ending June twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, board members. Uh, tonight I have a presentation for the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District, the tentative budget for twenty twenty-five, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The Cholo Bluff CFD is a special district formed by the property owners in two thousand and five. It's a separate unit of government from the city of Cholo. The debt issued was covered by the district's assessed value, and the benefit of the debt must be for the district, which in this case was primarily for infrastructure. There were two separate bonds issued, a special assessment bond and a general obligation bond. The general obligation bond was paid in full in twenty eighteen, which leaves the special assessment bond. Uh, two thousand and seven, when the bond was issued, it was two million and fourteen thousand dollars and had annual debt service of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, there were two hundred and twenty-seven parcels total, and Cholo Bluff Development owns about fifty-two percent of those. We currently have unbudgeted reserves of two hundred and four thousand. On the revenue side, our beginning fund balance is two hundred and sixty-four thousand, and our assessment billing, uh, is a hundred and twelve thousand. And there are two billings. In June, we do principal and interest, and then in December, there's an interest-only We need the, the board to adopt the, uh, tentative budget tonight, and then it'll be advertised in the paper, and then we'll have a final budget adoption and a public hearing on June eighteenth.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain the motion. Vice Mayor.
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash oh one, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five at one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents.
Got a motion? I need a second. Second by Councilman Judd. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion pass unanimously. Next item on the agenda, do you have to read anything before you, okay? Approval of the minutes, uh, special meeting on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to accept those minutes?
I'll accept the minutes.
Got a motion, I need a second. Second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed, motion pass unanimously. Thank you, sir. I'll adjourn back in, I'll, we'll adjourn this meeting and recess back in our regular meeting. If I can find. Okay, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. Councilman Adams.
I just want to say thanks to the mayor and council and staff. You know, they, we do a lot with Cholo High School. We make sure that we, um, recognize them for their, their achievements. We had cheerleaders here today, and I want to thank Jay and, and all them for the hard work they do. Um, and then yesterday, we had a chance as a council to spend some time with the football team, and it's shown that we were behind them, and, uh, for, for Coach Boyce, and, uh, and Mayor was there, and, and we all, we all had a good time. And so I want to thank, thank everybody, and, and I sure, I love what we do as a city, and I love how we support our schools, and I'm just really proud for everything we've done.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Vice Mayor.
Um, well, we will have Father's Day before we meet again, so I wish you all a happy Father's Day, hope you have a wonderful time with your families, and, um, appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Senator Meier.
Commissioner and council, just a couple of things to tell you about. Uh, this Friday and Saturday, June seventh and eighth is the Cholo days at the Frontier Field. There's gonna be live music, arts, crafts, game booths and food. This is put on by our Cholo Chamber of Congress. So if you want to go out and support them, it should be a fun time. Couple of things in public works projects, we are going to start the Slurry Seal project this next two weeks, and we just ask for everybody's patience as we get through that project. That's something we do every year to try, try to preserve our roads, and it kind of can be an inconvenience at times, but ask you to be patient as we get these roads slurry sealed for the, the coming year. And as you may have seen, our new pickleball courts opened up yesterday. Had quite the crowd waiting to get on them, see who was there first. But, uh, we're excited to have those open. We're still finishing up a few things there around that project. The bathroom and stuff needs to be finished up, but we'll probably do a ribbon cutting a little later, but the courts are open and you can play on them, so. Excited for that. That's all I got, man.
Thanks, sir. I got a question on the Slurry Seal. I know, I know we have a map on our pa, our, uh, our website page. Do we have a detail of the roads and the dates on those?
I don't know if it gets the specific dates, but it gets the roads that are gonna be done this year. I don't know, Bill, is there a specific date for each road? It's kind of up to the contractor.
Should have a schedule from the contractor probably late this week, but I warn everyone that it's a pretty fluid process once they get going. Things that happen, so it moves around a lot, and Shane tries to keep that updated, and I will talk with, uh, with Grace and see if she can also keep that updated on our website as the project progresses, but it tends to be a little bit fluid, so we'll get something posted.
And the reason I'm asking that is, is we, we showed a video of, of the contractor that they're getting ready to do that, and if you'll read the comments, they were like, okay, when and where? You know, we know we have the map, but they, they were really wanting to know the dates to get ready for it, because isn't it usually a couple of days' warning? If it's your street, it's, it's not like a...
They do door hangers.
Yeah, but it's not like a week ahead of time.
No, no, it's like two days.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah, if we can do that, that would be great. There was just a lot of comments on, on the social media page once we shared that video today, so. Thank you. Any other, anybody need seconds? Councilman Hatch, you still with us down there? Okay, just to make sure. Scheduling meetings.
Well, Mayor and council, just, uh, we have our regular meeting on July, or, sorry, June eighteenth, but we are going to have a special meeting that night to discuss the water settlement at five o'clock. So if you just put that on your calendar, that is confirmed.
June, oh, five. What day? June eighteenth, the same as our council meeting. Just gotta be earlier.
Just a little earlier, so we'll start at five, and then we'll have our regular meeting right after that.
I can't spell that, but, right, I'll correct that. Anybody have a problem with that meeting? Just kind of need everybody there. Okay, is that the only one? Next item on the agenda, if there's no other business before this council, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.